Okay. Good morning, everyone. Reading the order. Everyone please rise for the pledge. Thank you. It's great to be back again. I'll entertain a motion for the reading and approval of the minutes.
Second.
Another question? In favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Opportunity for the public to address the board agenda items only. Okay, no one here, thank you. Ordinance, first reading, 220075.
Let me sure this is the first reading of an ordinance for the bond swap. At the end of it, Attorney Brian Kuzlansky and our financial advisor, Mr. Michael Vinck, can comment on it, or if you have any questions. An ordinance to the Board of Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna, Pennsylvania, approving an interest rate management plan, approving the form of an amendment to an existing interest rate management agreement relating to the 2017 bonds, whereas the county has here before issued its $58,490,000 original aggregate principal amount general obligation bond series of 2017, whereas the county and PNC Bank National Association have entered into a qualified interest rate management agreement with respect to the 2017 bonds, and whereas the county has caused an interest rate management plan to be prepared by the financial advisor. In furtherance of the interest rate management plan, the county intends to amend, modify, and/or supplement the original interest rate swap agreement, which in the judgment of the county is designed to manage interest rate risk or interest cost of the county on the 2017 bonds, and will assist the county in managing the interest rate risk or the interest cost of the county, and now therefore be enacted and ordained by the Board of Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna. In accordance with the purposes and objectives of the Act, the county hereby adopts and approves the interest rate management plan prepared and recommended by the financial advisor attached here too as Appendix 1. Subject to modifications from time to time is the chairman or vice chairman of the board, and the county's financial advisor and counsel to the county shall approve. In order to manage the interest costs of the county related to 2017 bonds, the authorized officers of the county that set forth hearing below are hereby authorized to execute and deliver the 2022 interest rate swap agreement, the substantial form of which is here, is attached here too as Appendix 2. The 2022 interest rate swap agreement shall obligate the county to pay the amount equal to 100% of the USD SIFMA Municipal Swap Index plus a fixed spread. Interest rate swap agreement shall obligate the counterparty to pay in a percentage to be determined by the financial advisor to be fair and reasonable at the time of finance, final pricing of the 2022 interest rate swap agreement of the Secured Overnight Financing Rate Index plus a fixed spread. The chairman or vice chairman of the board is hereby authorized to execute the 2022 interest rate swap agreement by manual or facsimile signature. The chief of staff or assistant chief of staff of the county is hereby authorized to attest to the manual facsimile signature and to affix the seal of the county on the 2022 interest rate swap agreement. The 2022 interest rate swap agreement will be in a general obligation of the county. The county hereby covenants that it shall include the amount of periodic scheduled payments due thereunder for each fiscal year in which such sums are payable in its budget for that year. In compliance with the Section 8281E of the Act, the members of the board in consultation with the financial advisor to the county have determined that a private sale by negotiation rather than public sale is in the best financial interest of the county. The 2022 interest rate swap agreement and other documents are presently expected to be dated as of their date of execution at any time after the filing of the proceedings with the Department of Community and Economic Development. The county hereby appoints and engages Stevenson Lee, P.C., to act as special swap counsel to the county, and hereby reappoint FSL Public Finance, LLC, to act as the financial advisor to the county in connection with the execution and delivery of the 2022 interest rate swap agreement and to facilitate the intent of this ordinance. All such expenses incurred in connection with transactions contemplated by this ordinance shall be paid solely out of the funds paid by the counterparty to the county as a one-time fee pursuant to the provisions of the 2022 interest rate swap agreement. The officers and officials of the county are hereby authorized and directed to execute and deliver such other documents and to take such other action as may be necessary or appropriate in order to effect the execution and delivery of the 2022 interest rate swap agreement, all in accordance with this ordinance. Mr. Chairman, we will read this again on April 6th, and it will become the second reading of the ordinance at that point, and you will sign off on it. Here to speak upon that is Mr. Michael Vinck and Attorney Brian Kuzlansky.
Michael?
Good morning, commissioners. I'm going to make this a whole lot simpler, hopefully, than that long-winded reading. The county executed an interest rate management agreement to manage the interest rate risk on its bonds, and this is going back many, many years before 2010. It currently, and every time we refinance a bond, it has to move under state law to that refinance bond, which was so far the 2017 issue. One of the legs on the interest rate management agreement is tied to the LIBOR, which is a London Interbank Offering Rate Index. That index is going to go away. The UK regulator, Financing Authority, that regulates that index deemed that it was able to be manipulated, and so they are phasing out of that index. So we needed to amend the existing interest rate management agreement LIBOR leg to an alternative interest rate index, and that is the Secured Overnight Financing Rate Index, or the SOFR rate, as read in the ordinance. So all we will be doing is amending the existing interest rate, one part of the LIBOR leg to the SOFR index rate that is designed to be cash neutral, and the mark-to-market is designed to be neutral from the county's perspective. Again, we're just having to do this because the event that that index is going away. So that long-winded ordinance is basically all the state law that requires and all the regulatory requirements to make this effect to happen. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that you had about that.
No, it's just more bureaucracy.
We have to do this no matter what, again, just because of this having to go away, but yeah.
And unfortunately, the local government in the debt act requires everything that's in there, even though we're just doing an amendment to an existing swap. So we have to advertise this, adopt it, send it to the state, they have to approve it, but it's the same process we do every time that we amend our, refinance those bonds as well.
Yeah, and just to be clear, it's not a new, it's not extending anything, it's not adding to anything. All we're doing is amending that one leg because that index is going away.
Well, we'll see in two weeks.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Resolutions, 220082, approving current payables.
Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approved the following payables. Lackawanna County's general fund numbers, 337-303-338077, inclusive totaling $2,840,384.76. Electronic fund transfers, including all payroll accounts totaling $8,586,155.77. Adopted at regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on March 16th, 2022. Mr. Chairman.
Anyone have any questions on this?
Commissioners.
Entertain a motion to approve.
Commissioners, if I may, included in today's approved payables is $1.1 million of funding for the Emergency Rental Assistance Program for the new administer of the program, Capital Access. And these funds were approved by our office at the Controller's Office immediately as were all emergency rental payments.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Another question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Resolution 220076.
Entering into the Agricultural Conservation Easements, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby enter into an agreement acting through its County Agricultural Land Preservation Board for the sale and purchase of agricultural conservation easements for 110.80 acre agricultural conservation easement on the John A., Amanda M., and Brandy J. Thomas Farm in Benton Greenfield Township, 53.07 acre agricultural conservation easement on the Darren and Lisa Marie Farm, Benton Township. Adopted at regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on March 16th, 2022. Here to speak upon that is the Farmland Preservation Program Administrator, Mr. Eric Johnson.
Eric.
Morning, commissioners.
Morning.
As was mentioned, we're looking for approval to purchase two agricultural conservation easements through our Lackawanna County Agricultural Land Preservation Program, the Thomas Farm and the Maria Farm that were mentioned. Both of these purchases will be made using state funds. No county easement funds will be used on either of these purchases. They are unique. It's the first time we have used federal money in order to pay for a part of these easements. The state of Pennsylvania has a cooperative working agreement with the federal government to provide reimbursement of half of the cost, so we're leveraging about $176,000 in federal funds that will be returned to the Commonwealth and in turn returned to Lackawanna County through our county program. So that's a new and unique situation with these farms. If there's any questions, I can be sure to answer them on either farm.
Good job, Eric. Anyone have any questions?
Nope.
Okay, entertain a motion to approve.
Second.
Another question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, thank you.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you.
Resolution 220077.
Entering into an agreement with Lackawanna College, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby enter into an agreement with Lackawanna College for the administration operation of the Transitional Assistance for Needy Families TANF Project, providing a two-week science, technology, engineering, and mathematics STEM-focused summer camp in the area of robotics and engineering for 15 eligible middle school-level participants to be effective during the month of August 2022. Adopted at regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on March 16th, 2022. Here to speak upon that, commissioners, is our Director of Economic Development, Ms. Brenda Sacco.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This resolution states that the county is entering into an agreement with Lackawanna College to administer a TANF project, providing a hands-on STEM-focused, two-week summer camp for students in sixth to ninth grades. The students will utilize LEGO Mindstrum's Education Space Challenge Kits, as developed by the LEGO company, to learn robotics, coding, and programming in building a robot and completing basic robotic tasks. The TANF proposals were all part of the formal RFP process and were approved at a Lackawanna County Workforce Development Board meeting prior to this meeting. Any questions?
No, no questions. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Another question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, thanks, Brenda. 220078.
Entering into an agreement with Johnson College, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby enter into an agreement with Johnson College for the administration and operation of the TANF project, providing an eight-week on-campus program in the STEM and heavy diesel technology fields for 25 eligible youth to be effective March through June 30th, 2022. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on March 16th, 2022. Once again, here is Director Sacco.
This resolution states that the county is entering into an agreement with Johnson College to administer another TANF project, providing STEM career awareness and college readiness activities. Again, all of the TANF proposals were part of a formal RFP process and were approved at the Lackawanna County Workforce Development Board meeting prior to being put forth for adoption.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions? Entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Another question? All in favor? Aye. Resolution 220079.
Entering into agreement with the Scranton Cultural Center, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby enter into an agreement with the Scranton Cultural Center for the administration and operation of the TANF project, providing a three-month series of interactive, career-focused workshops designed around theater arts field for 10 TANF-eligible youths, youth ages 12 to through 24, from June through August of 2022. Adopted at regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on March 16th, 2022. Once again, here is Director Sacco.
This resolution states that the county is entering into an agreement with the Scranton Cultural Center to administer a TANF project, providing career exploration in theater arts. Again, this is another proposal that was part of the RFP process and put forth for the Workforce Development Board.
Thank you. If there's no questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
Another question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. 220080.
Entering into an agreement with Keystone College, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby enter into an agreement with Keystone College for the administration and operation of the TANF project, providing a seven-week virtual instruction in the areas of life, skills, leadership development, and career exploration for 25 eligible non-college-bound high school seniors, effective March through June 30th, 2022. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on March 16th, 2022. Once again, here is Director Sacco.
Again, this is another TANF project, and this is with Keystone College, who will provide foundations in sustainable employment. And again, this is part of all of the RFP proposals that went forth with the Workforce Development Board.
Thank you, Brenda. Anyone have any questions? Entertain a motion to approve.
Second.
Question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Resolution 220081.
Entering into an agreement with St. Joseph's Center, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby enter into an agreement with St. Joseph's Center for the administration and operation of the TANF project, providing an 18- to 22-week pilot project, providing in-class training, onsite internships, and work experience, and the opportunity to earn micro credentials in the healthcare direct support field for seven TANF-eligible high school juniors and seniors who are at risk of leaving school before graduation, to be effective from March through August of 2022. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on March 16th, 2022. Finally, once again, here is Director Sacco.
This resolution states that the county is entering an agreement with St. Joseph's Center, and it will administer a TANF project that provides real-life vocational experience to serve as a gateway for several, several post-secondary careers, such as nursing, social work, health sciences, employment services, and healthcare services. And again, this was part of all of the proposals that went forth in front of the Workforce Development Board.
As usual, you've been very busy.
Yes.
Anyone have any questions? Okay, entertain a motion.
Second.
Another question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brenda.
Great job. Resolution 220083.
Approving the Hazardous Materials Response Fund Grant. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve the submission of the Hazardous Materials Response Fund Grant for the Department of Emergency Management. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on March 16th, 2022. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is the Director of the EMA, Mr. Tom Taylor.
Morning, commissioners. This hazardous materials response fund grant supports the county's hazmat safety program. This helps with the purchase of equipment and expendable supplies needed for hazmat cleanup. With, last year, we did over 100 calls for diesel fuel and things like that, so this helps support that cost. It's usually around $16,000.
Anyone have any questions for Tom? No, okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thanks, and Tom. Resolution 220084.
Approving the Radiological Emergency Response Grant. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve the submission of the Radiological Emergency Response Fund Grant for 2022 through 2023, with the Pennsylvania Emergency Management Agency, in the amount of $9,119. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on March 16th, 2022. Mr. Chairman, once again, here is Director Taylor.
The Radiological Emergency Response Fund Grant, this grant assists the needs funded to calibrate our radiological meters in the county. We have roughly about 43 that we house for our trained personnel. We also have portal monitors that have to be calibrated, so this grant helps support that cost, and we are a support county for the Talon Energy, for the Berwick Power Plant. We get some of their evacuees to the county, so this supports the overtime costs for employees and also supports the decon team in the county, which is mostly volunteer.
All right, thank you. Anyone have any questions? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Second.
Another question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
Resolution 220085.
Authorizing the filing of a PCCD grant. Authorizing the filing of the application with the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency for the Bernie Justice Assistance Grant on behalf of the Lackawanna County Public Defenders' Office. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve the submission of the Bernie Justice Assistance Grant to the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency by the Lackawanna County Public Defenders' Office, in the amount of $228,240. And be it resolved that the Lackawanna County Public Defenders' Office desires to install a dedicated, full-time social worker and a part-time investigator to fulfill grant objectives of approving, improving coordination of and access to services for people with mental health, behavioral health, intellectual disabilities, and/or substance use disorders who encounter systems engaged by PCCD, and to enhance the quality and availability of the services to include those most vulnerable and underserved, and whereas Lackawanna County does hereby authorize the Board of Commissioners and related parties to sign, approve, and authorize the submission by nature of the attached signature page, and does hereby authorize the chairman to accept any awards related to the Bernie Justice Assistance Grant, and now therefore be it resolved that the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners does hereby authorize the submission of this application to the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency Bernie Justice Assistance Grant Program on behalf of the Lackawanna County Public Defenders' Office. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on March 16th, 2022. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is the First Assistant of the Public Defenders' Office, Mr. Jody Kalanowski.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
Attorney Moran regrets he can't be here today. Through our services at the Public Defenders' Office, in addition to providing legal defense, our clients have underlying needs. They range from substance abuse to mental health illness, homelessness, undereducation, and we feel as part of our services, providing assistance to address these underlying issues is a good pattern going forward to allow our clients to get through the legal process of a criminal prosecution, as well as reducing the risk of reoffending. We do have a social worker, cross-designated employee, who we have seen great success working with different agencies to get help for our clients, but the numbers keep going up. Attorney Moran was able to discover through this grant that we could potentially employ a full-time social worker, as well as a part-time investigator, that would help us more, further reach out to our clients and provide these needs. We think in the long run, it's going to benefit our clients that we serve, as well as the community as a whole. We would ask the commissioners to grant our request to submit the application for the grant.
Thanks, Jody. Anyone have any questions? I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Second.
Another question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Thank you. Have a nice day.
You too. Resolution 220086.
Entering into a software subscription service agreement, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby enter into a software subscription service agreement with Pomodo Automotive Data Instruments for the Point of Sale System at the Coal Mine and Trolley Museum, to include hardware, software updates, and subscription fees. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on March 16th, 2022. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is the Director of Parks and Recreation, Mr. Art Moran.
Good morning, commissioners. This software and hardware update is required because the, our old system has become obsolete. It, it will, the new system will be hardware, software, the software will be cloud-based, so we will not run into this problem into the future, and it's for the coal mine tour and also the trolley museum, so it covers both areas. All right, thank you. Anyone have any questions? Okay, entertain a motion to approve.
Second.
Another question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thanks, Mr. Moran.
Thank you, commissioners.
Resolution 220091.
Waring the wireless network service and support, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby award the wireless network support, service and support to Icon Technologies Incorporated, 16 Salem Avenue, Carbonell, PA 18407, and does hereby enter into a network service agreement, term to begin April 1st, 2022, and to remain in effect for a period of three years, with an option to extend for an additional two years. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on March 16th, 2022. Mr. Chairman, here to speak upon that is our Director of IT, Mr. Mike Brown.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
This award goes to supporting our wireless network, the backbone of our current infrastructure, and that allows us to provide services to other community groups at a reduced service cost. So with this contract, this new support agreement allows us to have another team to help us with emergency calls, any issues that happens with our wireless network, and support them. The group was awarded this based on a committee, so it wasn't a one-sided type of vote. The committee went through the interviews and did all the pros and cons and selected the best choice for the county.
There was an RFP.
Yes, there was an RFP for this, and only two ISP groups or service groups actually applied.
Anyone have any questions for Mike?
Nope.
Okay, entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Another question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thanks, Michael.
Thank you, commissioners.
Okay, resolution 220087.
Appointment to the Lackawanna County Performing Arts Authority, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby reappoint the following individual to Lackawanna County Performing Arts Authority, James B. McDonough, Tuuklen Moore National Boulevard Music, to a five-year term to expire December 31st, 2026. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on March 16th, 2022. Mr. Chairman.
Anyone have any questions on this?
Nope.
Entertain a motion to approve.
Second.
Question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, thank you. 220089.
Appointment to the Lackawanna County Fair and Recreation Authority, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby appoint the following individual to the Lackawanna County Fair and Recreation Authority, Lori Marino, 604 Church Street, Justice, PA, to a five-year term to expire December 31st, 2026. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on March 16th, 2022. Mr. Chairman.
I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Another question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Resolution 220090.
Appointments to the Lackawanna Susquehanna BHIDEI Advisory Board, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby reappoint the following individuals to the Lackawanna Susquehanna BHIDEI Advisory Board. Lackawanna County Commissioner Chris Schirmek, one-year term, to expire December 31st, 2022. Martin McGurn, 536 Wheeler Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania, three-year term, to expire December 31st, 2024. Be further resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby appoint the following individual to the Lackawanna Susquehanna BHIDEI Advisory Board. Mr. Raymond T. Hayes, 2637 Cedar Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania, to a three-year term to expire December 31st, 2024. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on March 16th, 2022. Mr. Chairman.
Entertain a motion to approve. Now, since I'm on there, should I vote?
Brad?
Okay.
I think it's only if we have a monetary policy that we can make a motion.
Second.
Another question? Okay, all in favor? Aye, thank you. Before we get to the opportunity for the public to address the board, I'd like to ask Director Bill Browning to come forward, and there was some situation in the newspaper the other day about the rental assistance, where, in part of it is, you know, we asked for a lot of money, and we did a really good job with most of it, but there was an issue, and it was difficult because we couldn't hire people, and we tried. So I think Mr. Browning can answer these questions better than I can, so I asked him to come here today to talk about that a little bit. Bill?
Thank you, commissioner. I just want to point out that our housing crisis predates the pandemic, that we had actually established a housing unit to deal with the housing crisis pre-pandemic. Pandemic hit, we received CARES dollars, we distributed all of those CARES dollars, about 1.1 million. We continued to do the best we can, still dealing with the existing homeless issue and the pandemic. There were two distinct populations, right? These weren't, there wasn't a lot of overlap, it was a whole new population of homeless. In the interim, like the rest of the state, we did have difficulty hiring. We have about a 20% vacancy rate. That puts us in the middle of the state. Surprisingly, in the middle, there's some that are even worse. Because of that, we continued to try to process the application as they came in. We did it a little different because they are social workers. They're not just processing applications, so as the applications came in, if they are incorrect, they called them up, they helped them fix it, which helped those individuals, but it did create a backlog. And various times, we would get additional funds that had time limits on them, and the reason for the time limits, it wasn't to punish the counties, it was actually what the US Treasury wanted to do is get money to the larger urban areas as quickly as possible because they had a larger infrastructure, and if we couldn't spend it as quick as they could, they wanted to get the dollars to them. For instance, I believe in January, Philadelphia asked for $450 billion because of their great We evaluated, our workers were putting in hundreds of hours of overtime to process it, we realized that we had to do something different, we looked at various models, and we saw that the best models were the ones where they were able to contract the system out, unless you had a huge infrastructure like Philadelphia or something like that. For instance, Luzerne County contracts it out to CEO to do it. It's a contracted organization, believe they're a 501(c)(3), they're able to process it. And the reason's simple, is that by law, everything, every check that's cut has to go through an audit process, right? It goes through the control, it goes through internally, it goes through the controller, and then eventually the check is distributed by the treasurer. So in the 1,600 people that we're able to fund, that's the process individually. With this firm, their purpose built to just process this, and it went through an RFP, and they were the most successful, they were able to demonstrate, they even had their own software developed just for this purpose. And then, so we're able to do one transaction, give them the money, and then they're able to draw down from that, from that fund, without having to go through the additional steps because that was already cleared and went through the controls, et cetera. So they're actually able to cut a check within 24 to 48 hours after the application's complete. That's something we can't do, just by the process. Just for example, since the last, I believe last week, they've processed about 500 applications, they've been sending out payments consistently because they are purpose-built to do that. We are going to reapply for those dollars. We know that, that most counties throughout, or most jurisdictions throughout the United States have required recaptured amounts. I believe it was over 60, 68%, somewhere around there, have required those dollars. So the dollars are there. We know that, like North Dakota had to return about $450 million. So the dollars are there, we are showing that we're processing them much quicker, and now the housing people can go back to dealing with the existing issues that we had. To date, we've, prior to even capital access contract, we're able to get about $8.5 million to people. It was reported that it was one-third of the ERA dollars that we spent. What, at the time, when we were looking at the data, was actually one-third of all of the dollars that we received, okay? We actually have spent about 60% of that funding stream. That's where the $2 million came from. So we had, our threshold was 65%, we've spent 60%, and then of the state dollars, we spent 77%. So in spite of the staff shortage, I just want to put it out there because obviously the staff are working hard, and look, we're not asking for a pat on the back, but my staff have been working, and they're doing the best they can. But even in that environment, we still realize we could do it better, and we're going to get the checks to people faster, and we're going to get the money back.
All right. Thanks, Bill.
Mr. Chairman, I thought it was important that Mr. Browning commented on that because there was parts that was left out of the article.
Right.
It should also be known that the National Low Income Housing Coalition came out with a report that qualifies what he's talking about. They showed that there's four areas throughout the country that this ERAP program is having recurring challenges. Number one is staff capacity, technology, and infrastructure. Number two is tenant responsiveness and application completeness. Number three is landlord responsiveness, and number four is federal guidance, which is always troubling.
Always an issue.
So we're not alone in this. We asked for 20 million, Luzerne County asked for 10 million, they were able to get theirs out, we'll get ours out.
We'll get it.
And we'll get the $2 million back.
Yeah. And again, thank you, and thank your staff, Bill. Actually, our Human Services Department has, is a model for the state on many levels, so we're very pleased with the way it's been going, and I want to thank Bill. Okay. Opportunity for the public to address the board.
Joan Hoad wanted Scranton. Yeah, that's the subject I wanted to talk to, is this emergency rental assistance program. He's answered a lot of my questions, but I want to look at the broader picture. The newspaper article said that, yes, you were overwhelmed by the number of applications, and I understand that, which leads to delays in processing the claims, but once a claim was approved, there was often additional delays in distributing the payment because of the way the county handles payments of bills. Now, I understand that you hired capital assets to process these claims. First question is, will capital assets only handle this program and then go away, or will capital assets be outsourced to handle payments for all programs in the future?
Mr. Chairman, right now, they are solely contracted to handle this program.
This project.
If they were to do something in the future.
That's fine, because this is an emergency program, so I don't have an issue with that. However, if we have a systemic IT issue, a software issue or hardware issue with processing payments, maybe want to look at that and get that fixed so that in the future, this issue does not arise again, whether it's emergency rental assistance or some other issue. It says in the article, it could be weeks or even months, months, from approval to payment. Now, I understand that there's, you know, a lot of hoops to go through, but months? How can we explain that?
I think part of the problem is, when people put the applications in.
No, this is from approval to payment.
I don't know that, and I've never heard that. Again, if it gets tied up and it has to go to the controller's office and has to go to the treasurer's office, Mr. Controller, you have an answer for that, or any?
Yeah, I do, Commissioner. For example, just this past Friday, March 11, our office received a payment for emergency rental. The application was dated November. We just received it Friday, March 11. We approved it by Monday. So it went right out, it went right out as soon as it hit our office. I'm sure Mr. Browning's housing people were overwhelmed. I don't know why it would have taken from a November application until March 11 to reach my office, but we immediately approved it. There could have been missing information that the housing department may have needed.
Yeah, but the article's saying it was approved, and then it's taken months for the payment to go out. That's my question, not the approval process. But this is saying it could be weeks or even months from approval to payment. Okay? He said, he being, I think it's Mr. Browning, from the county, that's the way the article reads. Now, my only point is, if there's a software or hardware issue, and it's surfaced because of this program, let's fix the issue so it never arises again. I think that would be a wise expenditure of taxpayer dollars, or at least look into the issue and make sure that there isn't something going on, because the most vulnerable people are the ones that are paying the price. And, you know, I understand staffing shortages, I understand being overwhelmed, I understand these people working overtime, and God bless them that they did, but you got to give them the tools and the resources to perform their job, and we've got to protect the vulnerable in our community. My only other question I want to ask you is, how are we doing on replacing Tom Durkin and John Foley?
We're on, we're on this. Very important.
Good luck, and we'll put you on the prayer chain.
Thanks, Joan. Anyone else?
Marie Schumacher, East Mountain Roads, Scranton. This morning, I had a 9:15 appointment, but I thought I might want to come here, so I went online to get the agenda, and this is what I found. So what I'd like to know is, what did I do wrong? I went to the, I went to the page, I did the meeting, meetings, and I, and the only thing on the right side, there was a.
I downloaded mine.
Yeah, I did, too.
I did, too. That's how I printed mine today, so I'll look into it.
At what time? Before 7:30?
Before 7:30, no. About 9:30 before I come down.
What time?
It was published 24 hours in advance, so.
Where?
No. That's what the. Yeah.
Okay.
We'll try to figure that out, because I printed mine out right before we came down here.
Oh.
And I highlighted and stuff like that.
Okay. Now, I am correct that you have given a contract for the reassessment program?
Yes. There's a contract in place, the attorneys are.
Not yet.
It's not a contract in place, there's an RFP in place, that's what I'm trying to.
It was a proposal that was submitted by Kyler, and now we're in the process of asking and creating a contract that will then go back for approval if they so desire.
Oh. Thank you. That's even better than, will that contract include having a product that will be, that we'll be able to reassess in small periods of time, like every year, every two years?
Well, that's more a product of legislation, not a product of the current contract. If I understand your question, is your question relative to future reassessments at particular times, so that there's not another situation common to this where decades go by without a reassessment?
Well, let me, I'll just explain quickly. I've spent 20 years in Washington and living in northern Virginia for, before my mom got hurt. So we got an assessment every year. Now, I realize that a lot of northern Virginia particularly was, has new developments, and it was rather easy to find something that's homogenous, but I think there are ways to do that, and is that being done in this contract?
Not per this contract. That's, again, more a function of legislation, whether or not a governing body, this governing body, or more so at the state level, makes that determination and includes that as part of legislation. So in the instances in which you're talking, as well as many others, where there are certain periods whereby reassessments are required, those are a product of legislation that's been developed by the governing body, not a product of an existing contract.
Okay. Are you working, working with anybody in Harrisburg, that we send to Harrisburg for that to, for that legislation to come out, so we have more flexibility and what we, how we do it?
I think we've been working with our local legislators for over 20 years to do this. Again.
Did you reach any conclusions at all?
They understand, and they're not disagreeing. And it is, it's not something we can do, it's something the state has to do. We have to follow the state law.
Understand that, but do you have a sample product that you're taking to them, asking them if they would?
It's half the country, yes. The answer to that is yes. I mean, again.
Okay. Is that available for viewing?
I'm sure it is, I don't have it, you know, in front of me, but.
Well, no, I didn't expect you having in your hip pocket.
But no, it's done in many, many states, but it's not what the state of Pennsylvania says. You know, Pennsylvania, that's.
But I'm saying, you said, you said you're taking samples of what you need to them, and that's what I would like to review, to see what's in that.
And Ms. Schumacher, let me, just so we're clear, I understand, I believe, what you're asking. There's no per se samples. So the sampling that I think Commissioner Natariani is referring to would be sample contracts that other entities have entered into, once they've selected who's going to do the reassessment. What you're asking about specifically is related to set timeframes for future reassessments, right? Like, for example, every four years, or two years, or five years, like you've seen in other areas in which you've resided. And, and so that is part of an overall discussion that's been going on, quite frankly, for many decades. You know, there's the interplay between the legislative component of that and, you know, and the political component of that, but that's been an ongoing discussion for years. What we can do is, and the Commissioners have done thus far, is made a decision, at least regarding this county, that we need or should look to go and move forward on reassessment, and so they've taken that first step. The next step is simply the drafting of the contract. That contract will only relate to this current reassessment, it will not address future reassessments because any future reassessments would have to come back before a board for approval. The only way we can set future reassessments, you know, set reassessments at certain timeframes, is if that was set by the legislature at the state level.
Okay.
And that's what the Commissioners have been communicating with our other local legislators. And as Commissioner Natariani pointed out, I think everyone gets it, but it's part and parcel of a much larger discussion that's going on at the state level across all 67 counties.
Okay. Well, I've got another one for the, whether or not it's covered by legislation now or not.
Right.
Here, we've got two factors.
Right.
But we've got land, which I've never understood how that's done, and the assessment of the improvements.
Right.
Now, in Lackawanna County, I know, I don't know if it's state law, but you have to, the only way you can get in a reassessment now is if the community in which the property exists gets a building permit to extend the footprint of the structure on it, on the improvement section. Is that required, or could that be? I mean, you know, there are a lot.
Unless they change the state law, all we can do, that's the reason we're trying to reassess now. Until they do, we can't spot reassess, we can't decide to do it.
But, yeah, I know that. I mean, I know, but, but that's what, that's what your trigger is. You pull the trigger when you have a larger structure on the property.
Correct.
But what I'm saying is, the, I think the requirement for fairness in reassessment or assessment is the marketability of that product, that, that, so I would say to you, if I have an identical house to me, next to me, say, that was built the same time, and somebody buys one, and they take it down to the studs, and they redo the inside, and they, now that increases its marketability, but that is not taken into consideration here. Is there, does the law prevent you taking consideration for internal improvements that increase the marketability?
Yes, the answer to that is yes, because when someone typically does reconstruction or the like relative to their property, they have to pull those permits, right? When they pull those permits, depending on what those permits are, those permits, my understanding is ultimately will work their way back through the administration down to the assessor's office. So if someone, for example, takes an existing structure that's 2,000 square foot and increases the footprint, and now that structure becomes, say, a 3,000 square foot structure, just based on the permits that are pulled, would have the impact of increasing that assessment. And then at that point, if the homeowner determines that they want to appeal that assessment, they can do that, and then they go through the reass, not the reassessment, the tax appeal assessment process. And then from that process, Marie, there's two arguments they can raise, fair market value or uniformity. The issue with the reassessment now is that the properties are arguably not uniform anymore or any longer because there's been such a gap between, you know, the current assessment or proposed current reassessment and the last one, which occurred 53 years ago.
Okay. One more, and then I'll let you go. Have you looked at doing, doing the grouping by the last four digits of the, of your zip code? Does anybody know what the last four digits are, how they got added?
What's the question?
Yeah, when you say grouping, just so we understand, what do you mean grouping?
Well, for the marketability, because of the commonness of the.
Well, let me say this, with the reassessment, Marie, this is going to be a comprehensive reassessment. So what's going to occur is that this company, presuming that the Commissioners approve the final contract, will literally and physically go out to every single property in our county. I think they estimated it was about 100,000, if I'm correct, somewhere in their properties. So they'll physically go out, they'll physically inspect, they'll physically measure, and so they'll determine at that point what the reass, or what the assessed value is based on that physical inspection, and they're physically going out there. So I hope that answers your question, because you're asking about whether we're going to group based on the last four of the zip, but we won't need to because with the reassessment, it's going to be comprehensive. They're going out to every property, no matter which zip code they're in, within the county.
Inside and out, then? They're going to inspect insides and outside?
Not inside, no.
But that has a great impact on the marketability.
And, and that's not something we. And, and that's not something we can control.
Right.
We're updating something that's over 50 years old. We're trying to fix it as we're allowed by the law.
And Marie, I think...
It's not fair now, you have similar properties...
It's going to be not, still not fair when you're done then.
It'll be fairer.
I, I think, I think the thing though, Marie, is, is that you're looking at the term marketability, and I understand what you're saying, but marketability doesn't equate to assessment. Assessed value is determined based on...
And there are states that do allow that.
The land and the improvements.
When it's sold.
Well, I will tell you, I keep a log, I've kept a log for years of where I give the, what the selling point was and what the assessment was, and a sort of a, an individual common level ratio, even though it's a unique, and, and those who are above or below. Now, I'm, I'm anxious for July 1st to see what the state comes up with, with all the money that's poured in this time. But, I would ask that you look at, or have some contractor look at, those last four digits of the zip code that have been added, are your post, your postal carrier?
Well, and again, that's not an issue. That's the reason for the reassessment. I understand what you're saying. And again, we can only do what the law allows us to do.
I would, I would like to see, when you're finished, because I'm sure IT could do it in no time at all, would be those last four digits, well, actually, you have to do the...
Is that going to get into somebody's house?
The nine.
I'm not, I'm not getting in this conversation, though. I'm really not. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, I just want to state this. I don't want a discussion, I want to just tell you that it would be very nice, when this is over, to take every nine-digit and see what the differential is for a given period of time on the difference between the actual sale price and the assessment. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody have anything else?
Good morning, Commissioners and Board. My name is Sean McHale, and I'm privileged and honored to be the Executive Director of the Deutsch Institute, which is a not-for-profit organization, serving folks with intellectual disabilities since 1979. And I am here to thank you, Lackawanna County, for the assistance, working with J.J. Perron and getting the opportunity to help us during these trying times. And I also wanted to share with the Board and the Commissioners our partnership with the city of Scranton on Robinson Park. We are the new leases for the park, and we're looking at rehabbing the, the building and the outsized to serve not just folks with intellectual disabilities, but the public. And as we look at our folks that we serve, you know, we use the term diverse abilities versus intellectual disability. So, we thank you on behalf of the Board of Directors of the Deutsch, and looking forward to continuing our mission and partnering with the city and the East Mountain Neighborhood Association. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Commissioner, if I may, under public comment, the Lackawanna County Home Rule Charter requires the Controller's Office to submit to the public an annual auditing activity report by April 1st of each year. I presented you a copy of one today, and I have extra copies here if anyone from the public would like one. Thank you.
Commissioners, other business, Mr. Sarmack.
I'll turn that back on. Thank you for all the comments from the public, appreciate that. It's a privilege to me to serve as your Commissioner. And as far as reassessment, you know, let's hope that we can do this correct, thoroughly, and we'll get as fair as possible for, for all the properties. You know, I, I know, I understand what you were saying about not going into the properties or into the houses, you know, because that does have an effect on the value of the property. But, like Jerry said, you know, by the laws of Pennsylvania, we can't go in the house. So, basically, it's probably square footage and things like that. But, hopefully, we can do this correctly and make it as fair as possible. Also, let's not forget our friends in Ukraine, let's keep them in our thoughts and prayers. And this Saturday, we're going to try the St. Patrick's Day Parade again, so hopefully we're going to have some nice weather, so have everybody come out and support the parade. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner, what about...
I just have an update with regard to reassessment. I did have a meeting with... There we go. I did have, I did have a discussion, as I indicated I would, a meeting with both Bridget Carey, who's the Solicitor for Assessor, the Assessor's Office, Barb Linity from the Tax Claim, and then Joe Joyce, who's the Solicitor for the Tax Claim Bureau regarding trying to get something in place for, to protect the most vulnerable citizens, not just the elderly, but people of low to medium income who would be negatively affected possibly by reassessment. So we, we determined, we found out, well, Barb Linity found out, and she enlightened us, that Monroe County, which is most similarly, similarly situate to Lackawanna County, except for the geographics. I mean, they have a lot of people who live in Monroe County and, and, and work in New York, so their average income is a lot higher than here, but size-wise, they're very comparable to Lackawanna County. They have a circuit breaker deferment program, so we are reaching out to them to try to find out the parameters, how they came up with the, with the, the median income that they use to have as a threshold for people who qualify for deferment in the event that they're negatively affected by reassessment and their taxes are increased. So we are working towards that. I don't know how long it's going to take for the lawyers to get the contract together. Do you have any idea?
We didn't get the draft yet.
Okay, they didn't get the, so what...
We're waiting for them to supply us with the draft. I didn't get the initial draft yet. They're aware, but we've talked with them. So I would hope to get something by the end of this week, so we start reviewing, certainly by next week. That'd be the plan, at least, to start us reviewing. Once I get it, I'll disseminate it to everyone, but I don't have the initial draft yet.
We determined that because it's a, the Tax Claim Bureau handles delinquent taxes where we're, this is going to be not for people with delinquent taxes, but for people moving forward with, as a result of a reassessment, whose taxes go up and they just don't have the money to be able to pay it. So, we've determined that it's, the proper office is probably the, the Assessor's Office who's going to be handling all of this. So, hopefully, we will have, we're going to have to pass, I, I think, a resolution by, you know, an ordinance, once, once we have every, the parameters put together, but we are working on it. Hopefully, ideally, it would be done prior to the vote on the, the, the third and final part of reassessment to move forward. If not, it will at least be in substantial form so that everyone can, you know, rest easy knowing that we are trying to get something together to protect those who may need it. So, and also, don't drink and drive on Saturday for your own safety and the safety of others. Call an Uber. And, happy St. Patrick's Day, even though I'm not Irish, everybody's Irish on St. Patrick's Day. I would wear green, except I don't own anything green. It doesn't look good on me. All right, that's all I have.
Thank you. As far as the, the reassessment is concerned, everyone's concerned about not hurting anyone. I mean, we really are. It's, it's, but it's far too long, and it's not fair, and it needs to be done. So, someone has to take the responsibility and do their job, and that's what we're trying to do. As far as the ability to go into someone's houses, or the ability to go forward in how you assess or reassess, that's a state law, we can't change that. There are, there are states where the last sale price is what happens, it's how it works. Pennsylvania isn't one of them. All we can do is, you know, talk to our state representatives, and they can talk to their colleagues, and, but so far, it's fallen on deaf ears in Harrisburg. We're, we're, we're dancing as fast as we can, all right? We're doing our best, and we're trying, and we're trying to do the right thing. And, other than that, happy St. Patrick's Day. We did order a Ukraine flag, which we plan on raising soon, and...
We have two for Tuesday for the courthouse and the government.
We got two flags? Oh, okay. So, on Tuesday, well, we should be able to raise Ukrainian flag. Mr. Jeffers, you have anything else?
That was it.
That was it? Okay. Undertainer motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Other question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.